Get started on business here. We have a number of things going on today. I believe, are we, we're intended to open the meeting with the key special meeting?
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll convene this meeting, this is a meeting of the members of the Cumberland Area Economic Development Corporation. Kate, will we need a roll call members present, please?
Commissioner Eichelberger, Commissioner Foschi, I'm here, Commissioner Di Filippo.
President.
Okay, a public comment for the members of the Cape. Okay, that brings us to item four, the business item today, and this is in regards to the ongoing discussion regarding an appointment to the K D executive committee by commissioners. So I believe we received some input from Kate and open the floor for discussion.
Yeah, you're referring Gary to the communication of April twenty six.
Okay.
Janet Anderson provided us comments.
All right, so we did, that's a recommendation essentially, so.
And I'm fine with the recommendation.
Okay. So we would need, I guess, if there's some discussion regarding those, do you need a motion with an amendment?
I'll make a motion that we members of K D appoint Mr. Kentucky as representative to the executive committee. Time period, May eleventh, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it is moved and seconded, ready for the discussion. It's not all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. So the business regarding Kate. Not will entertain a motion for adjournments. Move to adjournment schedule. That'll bring us to the regular business, beginning with the salary board of the county again today, May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, point at hour nine thirty a.m. We will call meeting order, begin with a roll call members present, please.
Commissioner Eichelberger, Commissioner Foschi, I'm here, Commissioner Di Filippo.
Present.
Deputy Controller de Rosa.
Present.
All right, thank you. Might raise this opportunity for public comment regarding salary board issues.
Nobody's online.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have the minutes in hand of our meeting of April twenty-seven.
Requires action. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, salary board minutes of April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, there's no further questions, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, that brings us to our five salary board actions.
I'll make a motion to approve the salary board actions as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, other business to come before salary board. You're right, so a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Stand adjourned, thank you. Moves us into the board commissioners meeting. We open, as usual, the pledge of allegiance. Okay, we need a roll call once again, members present.
Commissioner Eichelberger, Commissioner Foschi, I'm here, Commissioner Di Filippo.
Thank you. All right, and into our format. At this point, we open the floor for public comment, anyone who wishes to comment on an agenda item that's on the agenda, you'll have your opportunity when that agenda is addressed. Any additional items can be addressed. Oh, all right, at this point, I'll turn it over to the COO chief.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have the consent agenda. Agenda items number four through eleven are routine items that do not appear to require any discussion. If anybody wishes any of those items to be moved out of the consent agenda, a request to do so now would be appropriate. Hey, hearing none, seeing, seeing no request, commissioners, I would ask that the consent agenda, again, agenda items four through eleven be approved.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Has moved and seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That takes us then to the regular agenda, these are non-routine items. They'll be discussed and acted upon individually, and I'll start with agenda item twelve, which is on discussion and approval for the commissioner's office to accept the donation of the spirit of seventy-six. It is a framed print, and the Matea Law Firm has actually offered this to the county. They'll be moving offices and the painting just, the print just doesn't fit. And anybody that is watching, I know it's probably hard to see, but everybody in the room can see it. It's, it's over here in the corner, it's, it's beautiful. They're offering that, and commissioners, if you wish to accept, we just need to approve that donation.
I will move to approve, to accept the donation of the spirit of seventy-six framed painting from Matea Laughter.
A second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, any further questions? If not, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Agenda item thirteen is also approval of donations. You may recall that Bob Shively had spoken earlier, and he's actually joining us online to provide an overview of the donations. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning, commissioners, as a follow-up to the approval for donations during telecommunicator week, April ninth to the fourteenth, that we had discussed at review team. This is the final list of donations we received. The donations provided, Mission Barbecue Appreciation Meals for each of the four teams in the nine-one-one center, as well as a couple raffles for gift cards for the staff. So the final list, we had a couple anonymous donations, Texas Roadhouse for one hundred and fifty dollars, which was fifteen, I'm sorry. Yeah, fifteen gift cards. I'm sorry, ten fifteen-dollar gift cards, ten fifteen-dollar gift cards. MG Tactical Advantage, a hundred and fifty dollars, parties for a hundred dollars, which was ten gift cards. Schipensburg Area EMS, a hundred dollars. Mission Barbecue for seventy, Giant Foods, twenty-five-dollar gift card, Weiss Market, a twenty-five-dollar gift card. Christine Gutshall, a twenty-five-dollar gift card. Camp Hill Police Department, twenty-five dollars. North Hanover Grill, twenty-dollar gift card, and Applebee's, a ten-dollar gift card. So if you would.
Any questions?
To approve those for acceptance.
Give a motion.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the donations for our Department of Public Safety as presented and noted on the agenda item thirteen.
My second.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, thanks, Bob. We'll move on then to agenda item fourteen, and we have Darby Chrisley here with us to talk about a contract for adult probation.
Good morning, commissioners. Adult probation is seeking your approval when it enters into a contract with tomorrow's neighbors. It was actually the board's generosity of ARC funds that allowed tomorrow's neighbors to open their reentry house here in Carlisle. In fact, I think today is the opening of the house, at least the saw of the building. And tomorrow's neighbors is seeking an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for PCCD for a grant. And as part of that grant, PCCD would like to ensure, assure that there are community partners are going to refer folks to the reentry program. And that is really the substance of this agreement, that adult probation will refer reentrance to their program. It's not exclusive, we can use other programs, and there is no fee associated with these referrals.
So we're looking back from on that.
I will move to approve the tomorrow's neighbor contract for adult probation as discussed.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Questions, thanks, Darby. Agenda item fifteen, we have Jamie Reiber joining us by Zoom to discuss contracts for children in U.
Good morning, commissioners. The first one's for Tor Youth and Family Services Incorporated, it's an addendum to our current twenty-two, twenty-three contract. We're adding a full rate for one of their sexual offender residential programs in the amount of five hundred and fourteen dollars and seven cents a day. That will not be used regularly, but we do have a youth that is currently to be going to that program. The second contract is for pediatric specialty care at Hopewell, this is a medical hospital that we have one specific trailed in, and we need to fund the room and board for that stay, and that amount is, I believe, one hundred and forty dollars and eighty cents a day. Any questions?
Oh, no change of motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the contract addendum for Tor Youth and Family Services, Inc., and also for the contract with pediatric specialty care at Hopewell.
My second.
Can you be seconded? All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Andrew Benner also joining us here to talk about the contract for juvenile probation. Andy.
Morning, commissioners. Here just seeking approval to enter into a contract with Nice Truth Solutions. Brian Nice is the evaluator, this is for polygraph evaluations, we've had an increase of youth that are negotiating their charges with the understanding that they will comply with a maintenance polygraph for a lot of times with sex offenses. It's been a requirement of district attorney's office, so we've entered into this contract, it's for two thousand four hundred dollars for the year, which we're projecting around five, that would be for five evaluations, looking at the current ones that we have, we estimate about that amount. So that would be for youth that are on supervision for sex offenses that are being required to have a maintenance evaluation. That we can't get covered by some other agency, sometimes we can, sometimes we can't.
Okay, so, word to the motion.
Andy, I'm, I'm really sorry, I didn't, I haven't spoken with you about this, but I am interested in why this is a requirement of the DA's office.
Because sometimes with sex offenses, a lot of times what's happening is they're negotiating lesser charges, not lesser charges, but a different disposition. So a consent decree disposition does not carry a formal record. In compliance with that, to avoid getting a formal record, there is a requirement for to have maintenance evaluations completed while the youth is in treatment. If not, they will be less willing to enter into that consent decree, which is a lower level, which would carry a formal record. And at times, some of those charges are not expungable, meaning that that youth for a rape or indecent sexual assault would have a permanent record for the rest of their life, it's not an expungable offense, according to the current juvenile court rules.
So we knew we were talking about this particular contract, that we would be contracting for this because sometimes we can't get another provider to do this work.
Yeah, so at times we have providers, we have youth that are involved in some of our sex offender programs that they, this is part of their treatment, they include polygraph exams as part of what they're providing for an out-of-home service. These are more cases where there may not be a requirement for treatment, or they may not meet a level of, from an evaluation standpoint, of needing treatment. In-home intensive treatment, but because of the way the disposition is being worked out, they are required by the district attorney's office as part of their agreement to have a polygraph exam. So we may engage them in services to another provider that doesn't provide the polygraphs. So then we have to reach out to get a polygraph completed at some point during their term of supervision.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I, I do not, I would like to follow up with the DA on that, and it certainly sounds like we're already engaging in this.
All right, it happens when we don't have an opportunity right now to get maintenance evaluations unless they're covered by insurance, if the family has insurance to get it done, or if it's one of the programs that we're using, which are backfilled, usually, we're probably out a year now to even get a kid in some of our sex offender program treatments.
Okay.
So this was an alternative to try and work with kids that are on supervision to get this done, so they can get through probation and get all probation in a short amount of time.
Okay. I, I, I am not prepared to do anything with this today, I would like to table it. Commendable for that. Yeah, I would motion to table this.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's moving second.
I have another question, is this going to delay something in your office, is this going to create an issue for you?
The impact would be that if we can't get the maintenance evaluations completed, or have a provider to do them, that those youth would then be forced to probably go to court on their charges and have a permanent adjudication type record.
If we table this at the next meeting, is this going to create an issue, solicitor?
I don't know. And it may be my ignorance of a maintenance evaluation, but I think it's fairly common knowledge that polygraphs aren't admissible.
Correct.
But how's a polygraph being used for offender as part of a maintenance evaluation?
I think it's just to make sure that there's no other offending occurring while the youth on supervision or after their initial offense occurred. So it's a follow-up to make sure that they're not continuing to offend or engage in behavior, sexual offending type behaviors moving forward with the treatment that's in place.
Again, I don't know anything about.
Correct.
The thing that's curious to me is having a lie detector as a method of doing an evaluation when it's not admissible in a court proceeding, but it's being used to see if they're still offending, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, and, and I don't disagree, I think there's a lot of debate on this issue and this topic.
That's what I understand.
The issue is, and I, and I don't necessarily agree with the premise, but what I will say is the issue is it's a requirement as part of some of the negotiations that are taking place through, between the district attorney and the public defender's office, so a lot of times that we don't play a role in that. It's basically saying, if you're not willing to comply with these standards, then we will seek adjudication on the sex offense, which may be something that carries a long-term, non-expungement-related offense.
So both the public defender's office and the DA's office works at this method as being a valuable tool, although it's not necessarily admissible in court.
Correct, because I think we're from, from a negotiation standpoint, if someone's charged with a defense such as a rape, which doesn't allow for expungement, if you're a G K on the rape, you can never get that expunged. From the public defender's standpoint, if they are willing to follow through and, and go on a consent decree, which is a six-to-twelve-month probation term without a permanent record, where if you complete everything, your charges are dismissed, with the understanding that they'll comply with a maintenance evaluation, just to make sure that they're not continuing to reoffend, they're willing to enter into that agreement as opposed to going to a trial, being found guilty of a charge that will not allow them to ever have their charges expunged.
Is this one tool of a maintenance evaluation that involves other aspects? Or is this the tool of a maintenance evaluation?
This doesn't occur in every situation and every sex offense that we have, it's only ones that there's a concern. But again, it's being used as a tool, as an additional piece of accountability for youth that are being charged with this level of offense for something that has significant long-term effects if they're eventually found guilty or adjudicated on that offense.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, I would just remind you that besides our next B O C meeting, we also have finance meetings, that we could certainly have this back in front of you.
And the only thing I would say is we are using these now with other providers, like other providers doing this as part of their treatments. If we're able to get them into those, some of those programs are currently being done, this is an option for us to have another op- opportunity. If those programs are full, we can't get youth in those levels of treatment, to continue moving you through our system.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and second, were there other questions?
Just one, Andy, this is a one-year contract, when does it start? It's not noted.
It would start today or whenever it was approved.
Yep.
Okay.
One question for the solicitor, and I, I don't remember the exact sequence on this, but I know this contract in particular, there were some questions raised about, I don't know if it was just the practice or, or the potential contractor. Do we feel those have been resolved?
In terms of the contractor, yes.
Okay.
There's an insurance requirement that my office would impose, like they would on any offender.
Okay, so the question for any other ones that are current on the table, okay. Okay, so we have a motion to table the proposal, and it's been seconded, there's other, no other questions, we'll call that vote, all in favor of tabling, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we'll certainly work with Andy with his availability and monitor, so that if this is able to come back on the seventeenth, you know, we'll certainly, just we'll coordinate with all parties.
Sure.
Thank you, thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, so that then takes us to agenda item seventeen, we've got Kirk Stoner online to present a contract for Liquid Fuels Finance. Hi, Kirk.
Good morning, Stacy, good morning, commissioners. This morning, we have for your actual proposal from H R G to do deck testing for our two county bridges, we have Bridge C twenty-one, which is Graham's Bridge in Upper Frankfurt Township, and Bridge Y one, which is called Foxley Bridge in Lower Allen Township, that is Beacon Hill Road over the yellow bridges creek. These two bridges weren't part of our original bridge capital improvement program, they're in good condition. We're looking out with these bridges, trying to proactively rehabilitate or maintain them. Purpose of the testing will be take concrete test borings from the decks and then establish the condition of the bridge to determine whether or not a full deck replacement's needed, or some sort of lesser rehabilitation or repair work will be done. Price of the, the testing is thirty thousand, six hundred dollars, it'd be completed by a subconsultant under H R G's direction, and then H R G will use that data to make a recommendation back to the commissioners on how to proceed.
Questions for Kirk?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract request for H R G for Liquid Fuels Finance.
My second.
Okay, it's moving seconded, for the questions, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Kirk is also going to be discussing the contract for planning, which is agenda item eighteen.
Commissioners, this contract is a land partnerships grant for twenty-four thousand, one hundred and seven dollars to the Latort Regional Authority, to Latort Preserve and Trail, they're going to be native, doing native plant restoration, basic species removal, trail development and brochures for like trail map of the system.
The motion.
I will move to approve the Latort Regional Authority contract for planning.
Sir.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Kirk. Okay, agenda item number nineteen, we've got Justin Miller here to talk about a contract for recycling and waste, hi, Justin.
Good morning, everyone. As you may recall, we are now a county affiliate of Cape Pennsylvania Beautiful. Cape, Cape Pennsylvania Beautiful asked if we would do a cigarette butt litter study at the Interstate eighty-one Welcome Center, which consisted of visiting the center two times and counting number of cigarette butts on the ground in three different locations. And that is because we are the closest county affiliate. To do that work, they would like to reimburse us a stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents a mile for a grand total of three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-one cents.
Questions? Okay, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the Cape Pennsylvania Beautiful cigarette litter study reimbursement grant application of three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-one cents.
My second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, I think Samantha has a question for you in regards to your can litter study.
We can discuss that at a later time.
Right.
Okay, Justin is also joining us to talk about a capital project request for recycling and waste.
Yes, so back, back in twenty twenty-one, you approved submission of a recycling grant application, a component of which was sponsorship of a Dickinson College anaerobic digestion project on their farm, which would be the digestion of manure and food waste to produce energy and fertilizer. We agreed to apply for funding for a food waste grinder, which will chop the food waste up into smaller particles before it's added to the manure. I've been working with their project manager, Matt Stamen, we identified two companies, both on Co-Stars, that sell food waste grinders. One has a local office in Camp Hill, which meant a lot to both him and I, so we would like to go with the Vogel saying, which is sold by Envirep in Camp Hill. Total cost is fifty-three thousand dollars. The state will ultimately pay ninety percent of that, and then Dickinson will cover the remaining ten percent.
Okay, we need a motion for approval.
I will move to approve the capital project request for recycling and waste for Dickinson College Food Waste Recycling with a total project cost of fifty-three thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then to agenda item twenty-one, which is a grant application for the sheriff's office, and we have Sheriff Smith with us.
Good morning, commissioners, and the sheriff's office is requesting approval to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. It's known as the Community Traffic Safety Project Grant, but we commonly refer to it and have referred to it in the past as the Highway Safety Grant, and we have been administering this grant for the last several years. The amount of the grant is five hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, ninety-one cents. This is an increase from the previous grant, however, the previous grant was a one-year contract, and Pendott is increasing the grant this year to two years, to bring it online with several other grant programs that they have. The intended use of this grant is to reduce motor vehicle fatalities in Cumberland, Doff, and Franklin and Perry Counties through education and team efforts with police and enforcement regarding seat belts, alcohol, and aggressive driving. Do you have any questions?
I heard it's a typo or transposition of the number. So this needle knows which one is correct.
Yes, there is.
So it's, great, the agenda says five fourteen.
No.
This is five forty.
Five hundred, five forty-one.
Correct.
I'll make a motion then that we approve the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Highway Safety Grant Application of five hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, fifty-one cents for the sheriff's office.
Commissioner, could you please repeat that number?
Five hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, ninety. Oh, we have two typos.
Yeah, it's the, the amount of the grant. My under, my understanding, the amount of the grant that I submitted paperwork for to apply for is five hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
Nine ninety-six.
Nine nine six point nine one.
So all that's to make.
Yes.
Are you sure on the nine nine six, because on the, the paperwork, both the grant paperwork from finance and the cover sheet say nine nine five nine one.
The request that I filed, that I sent to finance, that I have a copy of, the request that I sent to finance is five four one, nine nine six point nine one, and the term is from October twenty twenty-three through September of twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay.
And I'll double check that as soon as I get that, but that's my request that I sent to finance. Jack from Pendott.
I'm gonna need that buck fifty.
Never know, but thank you.
Okay, so I will amend my motion. I will make a motion to approve the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Highway Safety Grant Application of five hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
My second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. No further questions, I can get the amount right now, all in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the next agenda item is also for the sheriff's office, and we have Lieutenant Taylor here to present the capital project request.
Good morning, commissioners. Our office would like to replace one of our vehicles in our
Uh, our office would like to replace one of our vehicles in our fleet and replace it with a vehicle of comparable size and capability. Currently, we're looking to replace car number three, which is a 2011 model vehicle. By the time we actually get a replacement here, we estimate that car three will have over 150,000 miles on it. Uh, car three currently has no camera system and an outdated radio communication system. This vehicle currently has limited use in our office due to the duties we perform and with the outdated equipment and high mileage, leaving you prone to mechanical failures. This vehicle was previously listed for replacement on our five-year vehicle plan, listed for replacement this year. Um, and the total that you see before you covers the price of the vehicle and the installation of the emergency lights and radio. Any questions?
I have just, I think, two things to add. The radio equipment will comply with the new three twenty-five system.
Yes.
That is definitely a requirement. And the other thing is that when the capital project team reviewed this, uh, we did review the maintenance schedule, and the car was regularly maintained and uh, it followed all of, of facilities rules.
That's good. Okay, so we need, we're looking for approval of that.
I will move to approve the capital project request for the Sheriff's Office for a new vehicle with a total project cost of $47,668.11.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. No further questions? All in favor to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
That moves us then to Agenda Item twenty-three, and waiting patiently is Darren Maysh to discuss the capital project request for I N T O.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to request the purchase of twenty replacements access points as well as licenses. Our current, some of the current access points are just out of date. They need to be upgraded so that they can get the current security updates, and these new access points will also provide better coverage, better penetration through walls and things like that. The contract is, uh, I'm sorry, the purchase price is point nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five.
Any questions for Darren?
Make a motion to approve the capital project request for I N T O wireless access points with a total project cost $29,375.
A second.
Okay, moved in second. All in favor to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Right, that takes us then to Agenda Item twenty-four, which is Commissioners' liaison reports. I'll start by calling on Commissioner Iker.
Okay, just briefly, the, um, let's see, on, well, we heard from Justin earlier on the recycling grant, the only thing, uh, addition to that is next Tuesday is the tire recycling event. Uh, of course, the pre-registrations asked for that. He said, right now the count is of 1,042 tires. Yeah. We're very happy those are not gonna, uh, not gonna end up in the, in the river. Yeah, so that'll be, certainly. Uh, he said he's still, there's still a few more signups left that, you have some. So he said, we'll probably be over ten to fifty. That's only eight more than what we got, but that's Tuesday, so uh, another successful recycling endeavor. So, uh, in the authority meeting that was planned for next week is canceled. The only other thing I have is just a brief reminder, I think, where everybody's up to date on the MHIDD, particularly the MH funding issue. Working that issue. As a reminder, there is a anticipated public meeting to take place in Perry County. We, of course, are in the joint report with Perry County through our MHIDD services. So, um, our office, which we, we think almost our office serves Perry County as well. So that proposed date is Wednesday, May twenty-four. So we'll just, we'll make note of that, and hopefully that firms up real soon. Uh, Andy also wanted me to mention that the staff is hosting the next crisis intervention team training, which is May twenty-second through the twenty-sixth for our local law enforcement, that, of course, has been very well received and exceedingly important to meeting the crisis in our communities. So grateful for those opportunities. That's everything I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Frosty?
Well, good morning, Cumberland County. I would remind you to use the Cumberland County Library System. Uh, and they are kicking off, of course, their summer programming for kids and their summer programming, um, out in the field. It trails all around the region. So hats met, um, and a couple of interesting things coming out of that. The performance measure targets will be adopted. Um, these are for congestion management and air quality um, and as well as the condition of the region's pavement and bridges. We have the Safe Streets and Roads for All Program, which added $200,000 in federal funds, uh, with the $50,000 match and state funds. Um, and these funds will be used to complete path safety action plans for Doff and Cumberland and Perry Counties. They added, uh, $40 million in local funds, uh, in fiscal year 2024 and 2025 to the transit tip to support transit in Cumberland County, Doff County, and the city of Harrisburg. Mr. Deck talked about, um, the design phases going on right here in the Carlisle auxiliary lanes, uh, in the Wade Bridge. So let's keep an eye on Carlisle and watch what, what is going on there in the design page, phase. The ID one improvement strategy will be considered as tip development begins later next year. There was a meeting, um, about the Lemoine Bottleneck Project, and that was with stakeholders, and those, those discussions are going to be, um, implemented into the design plan. So I think that was another interesting thing. Watch for, there will be some public meetings on the Lemoine Bottleneck Project. The Western Cog Met, um, and boy, they again are talking about the P two-five radio project, how expensive it is, how those small municipalities really and truly are strapped to pay for those radios. Um, and I relate to them that Mr. Shively would be reaching out to everyone to have a conversation about this project. And, and what it means in terms of Harrison, Motorola, and the ARPA grants. Uh, and the L E P C, the Local Emergency Planning Committee Met, and I think one of the best things that is coming out of that group is they are adding new reporting facilities. At a, at a really nice rate, really picking up new facilities that are reporting on, uh, what is contained within their buildings. And that is all I have, Stacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner DePaul.
Yeah, I have no, uh, reports this time around. The Ag Board was scheduled yesterday, but was canceled due to, uh, no, uh, items need be addressed. A Blighted Property Reinvestment Board will meet this afternoon. I will be attending that. CAPCOG Monday night, and Housing Redevelopment next Thursday, and Aging Advisory Board next Friday. So next meeting, I'll have a full, uh, number of reports.
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on to Agenda Item twenty-five, I would like to report that executive sessions were held on April twenty-seven, 2023 at ten twelve, um, AM, and May four, 2023 at nine thirty AM regarding personnel. And then I'll ask if there is any other business to come before the board today.
Yes. Good morning again, Commissioners. Um, I owe the Commissioners an apology and finance an apology. If we go back to discussion item number twenty-one, the amount that I put on my request to file an application is correct, but we're also, I'm also responsible for sending them a Lawson paperwork, and I had the one digit off when that wasn't paperwork. It would account for a typo there, so I apologize for having that typo.
Sheriff. Any other business to come before the board's day? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.